Good start.
I would like to call to order the 2019 budget presentation meeting for Monday, December 10th of 2018. So if we could all please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Libby Brady?
Here.
Mary Scott Cooper?
Here.
Hakeem Jones?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Here.
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Derek Perry?
Here.
Sonya Sanders?
Here.
Next to our business we have will be the presentation for 2019.
Thank you very much, Council. I know you all are riveted and looking forward to hearing me, but I'm telling you, I'm gonna not take two hours and have a discussion with you about this tonight. I think it would be a repeat of everything I've said to you in talking about this budget for the last four and a half and so hours. What I want to do briefly tonight is kind of a quick recap of where we are. We really want to talk about the changes between here and there. Certainly, take any comment, Council had additional comments, Council has also taken any public comment that's in the room, and then we will relay to you the public comment that we've received, I've gotten, I have the public comments that you have also at your places, and we'll read that into the record as well, so that we will have taken in all of the public comment as well. And then hopefully, at the end of tonight, we'll be at a place where Council will be comfortable with making a motion to advertise the budget. Also, just also quickly, in doing so, once the budget is advertised and we go for a scheduled adoption on December 18th, you can no longer increase the budget, but you can reduce it should Council decide at that point you want to reduce it, and if at this point tonight, there is no comfort level in making a motion to advertise the budget, we will have to deliberate and get a further meeting, another meeting scheduled, to give us another 10-day window and another window to advertise, so that we can have a budget adopted prior to December 31st, midnight, December 31st.
So if, for example, we didn't want to have one of these advertised, and you have, we have to have a 10-day window for another ordinance, would that, how far would that put us back?
Well, that would, you have a goal, it depends on when you call the next meeting, because you're gonna have a goal, I mean, the end goal is December 31st. So you want to adopt on December 31st, you can do that, but you have to have had that at least December 21st to December 31 period for public review of the advertised ordinance. All right? So, very quickly, we can start. So this is just quickly to show this is where we are, so we're coming down to this stretch. Tonight, we want the motion to advertise the proposed 2019 budget, which would then be on December 18th. So as we shared, tonight, we have a budget, we have done some additional scrubbing. Both myself, Brandon, Norm, Mary Ann, we sat down, we had a great conference conversation last week with the National Resource Network as well to compare our numbers with their numbers. We're pretty, in so many places in line, and we came to some resolutions of where there were differences. One of the things I share is that there has been a slight increase in the budget. It basically reminds a couple of things. One of the police, I mean, one of the fire department positions that was approved last year did not get filled this year. And as such, because it wasn't in our records as prepared in the budget, it did not get included. So we did come back, the fire chief pointed us that out to us. And so we had to add that position and the benefits that go along with that position. We also were able to make some other reductions in the budget as well. But that, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but that net increase versus net decreases that we had to make in the budget results in a $59,037 increase in the projected budget from when we last presented to Council. And as you look at our budget trend since 2013, it has been incrementally going up, which has really been a pretty normal change because of five unions that we work with. So at 2019, we're proposing $34,545.83 in terms of a 2019 budget at this point. So again, the breakdown in terms of what makes up this 2019 budget is really, again, you look at police, it's always gonna be the largest. Public Works is the second largest. We got an hired administrative overhead mainly because of both bond debt and pension debt. Insurance, I'm sorry, insurance costs is pensioned, and workers' comp as well is a high cost. We talked a little bit earlier in that previous presentation where our insurance costs gone up mainly because of liability issues largely out of our control. Some of them, I noted to you, we had one $500,000 claim against us where we didn't pay the claim, but our insurance company paid the claim. And it wasn't for our responsibility, but we were named because the property owner did not have adequate insurance to cover that sidewalk issue that they had, and so we were the second name, and the court awarded it at the $500,000 limit, which our insurance company made of the difference. All of the other costs, you know, the largest departments, police, public works, expect to be, they're the two largest departments in terms of fire. Everything else kind of falls into very small department operations. Most of our staff, the great majority of our staff is represented in those organizations. So about 178 or so employees, over 100 of them are in the police department, and it works its way down from there. So when you look at our expenses again, both from 2018 adopted budget to 2019, what we're projecting in this budget overall is a 1.9% increase. So it's not a particularly large increase, not a large increase at all. Again, when we look at the big cost areas in this projected budget, you know, 16%, .3% increase in recreation, again, look at the smallness of the department. So a $15,000, a $56,000 increase in that budget would do that. As I've shared in the previous discussions, most of that cost is around putting the utilities that are associated with having a rec department in the rec department, and so that's the majority of what that was, that's covered. Yes?
Just for the record, can you break that down just a little bit more? You're saying, put it in utilities, but where did it come from, for the record?
Okay, so things like heating, we didn't have those costs for a recreation department until this year. And so we did put money in the budget last year anticipating, if you recall, we started these negotiations about acquiring that power building for recreations two years ago. It took a year to get that going, but we had put money in the budget for that. That money, at that point in time, was put in the public works department budget because we didn't have a, we didn't have a department to put it in. So those dollars that would have been in the public works department coming over to this year, we moved them over into a recreation department budget because the thing we want to do is make sure we track the costs associated with the department down to the operational costs with the department and not in some other area. So that's it. You talk about electric, water, we've got security over there now. So all the costs that go with operating a facility just like this one go into that, into that position, into that. Now, also, just like everybody else, when you're talking about overall expenditures, this is a lump sum, both the salaries too, overall expenditures from one year to the next. But that's specific for recreation, yes?
If it came out of the public works budget, why is there an adopted amount there for recreation in 2018? If it wasn't public works, wouldn't that be a zero in recreation and an increase of $345,000 in public works for 2018? Or are you talking about 2017 where it came out from the public works budget and it's now its own line item?
You hit me, that's it. That, it is, I get my years caught up, but we did allocate in 2017, and it did go 2018. You're right, I apologize, I got my years mixed up in doing that. So that's correct, I'm sorry. Any other?
Other question?
Yes?
I mean, I'm looking at our November 29th meeting, and the preliminary 2019 budget is actually less than what you're proposing today according to this document.
Yes.
On one document, I have $34,486, on today's document, I have $34,545.
That's correct. And as I shared in the beginning, go back a couple of seconds. As I shared in the beginning, the cost mainly relates to the fact that we did not include a position that was awarded to the fire department in that last one because it had not gotten filled, so it wasn't in there. And we, as we were scrubbing, we found that out, and we had to add it to this budget.
To the last paragraph?
I don't know, what were we able to shave?
Nothing. It didn't go in.
So I'm coming to where we're looking at, in terms of revenue and expenditures. All right. All right, I think that's, that's it. So again, what we're looking at in this budget, now that we made that adjustment, the changes associated really with the expenditure increases. Personnel, operating cost, personnel costs is about 52% of the change. Operating costs is almost 32% of the change. And then the insurance cost, particularly that $100,000 in liability insurance represents about 16% against this proposed increase. Go to the next one, Brandon, I want, wealth stock right there, go back, I'm sorry. So again, go ahead. You recognize that in terms of expenditures, personnel costs themselves represent 52% of those costs. Most of those personnel costs has to have to do with, we have labor agreements where personnel costs are already baked in, in multi-year agreements, and we just plug in the numbers that have already been agreed to in those contract negotiations. So let's talk a little bit about the change in personnel costs overall in terms of that $329,000 plus. So if you look at what our overall total 2019 projected contractual personnel budget is, it's about $11,133,623. That's all of the contracted personnel in the municipality. That's the budget for that staff. And it represents about 32% of the 2019 budget. When you look at the non-contracted staff, and that's professional staff that are not under contract, so department heads, middle managers, and some of the entry-level staff as well that are not contractual staff, that represents about 10.4% of the organization, and about, yeah, 10.4% of the organization. So when you look at this, and I will also, let me make a point here, you see an asterisk here, that this, we're talking about just the change in the budget. So this doesn't include all of the personnel because we didn't include the fire personnel in that number because their numbers didn't change, they actually didn't increase. It actually went down a little bit, one, because they didn't fill a position, two, because they had a couple of retirees, and the rehires actually came in less, at less salaries due to, you know, longevity and all of those things, than the folks who were occupied there. But when we're talking about just contracted personnel, where there was an increase that makes up that 32%, it's police at 55% of that increase, labor is at 32%, and the clerical staff at 13%. Now, of the overall personnel changes, in terms of any, this 32, $329 million increase, almost 79% of that is contract personnel, whereas 21, 22% is non-contract personnel. So the difference in those changes, $72,000 across all non-contract personnel and 256, almost 257,000 of the contract personnel. Of the overall change in the budget, and that's that $628,000 change related to expenditures that we're seeing, 41% of that, again, is related to those things in the contracted personnel, which, I'm sorry, of the overall change in that $628,000 increase, 40% of that is contractual personnel, and then .7%, that represents, that's about .7% of our overall $34.5 million budget projection. And for non-contracted personnel, 11.5, and then .2% of the overall $34.5 is represented by personnel costs. So you add those together, it's actually less than a percent increase of the increase has to do with personnel at all of the entire budget. So, some things we talked about, I know that a large part of the last discussion had to do with, how do we get additional revenue? What happened in terms of our revenue going down? Again, from 2018 to 2019, we've seen a change in the assessment of all the property values in Norristown. 2018, that number was $879.2 million. 2019, $875.7 million. So we did see a slight decrease in the assessed value of all the property in Norristown, which results in a decrease in the value of our millage rate. So the one mill that we generate, generated last year that would yield $879,289, this year yields $875,764. So that is how your millage rate is calculated against your budget, and it takes, it took 14.7 mills to get a number that would be a significant portion of our budget last year, but as you all recall, last year, we still had to use fund balance to actually balance the budget, of about a million dollars to actually balance the budget. So what we're looking at now in terms of revenue, our actual revenue was 31.9 in 2016. Right now, we're looking at 31.8. That's the unaudited estimate that we have now. We're finishing up this audit, we should have that real number at some point soon, but we're certainly using that unaudited estimate because that's what we have. We budgeted for revenue in this year of $33.877. We don't believe we're gonna get that $33.877 because, you know, one, you know, we've got some things that are gonna come in later in the year. At that last point, we'll be able to see, but we thought it was a conservative estimate. We'll see, and we'll certainly be able to tell you shortly as we get to starting this new audit process for actually the 2018 budget. The process will start immediately after the 2017 is over. So let's talk about this projected revenue. We, again, to be conservatives, are saying, based on what happened in this current year, instead of looking at the $33.8 we projected, we are gonna project $33.15, which is about a 2.3% decrease over what we projected for last year, and that's really based on the trend that we're seeing. We're thinking we're gonna come in around that number, or a little bit less probably this year. But we think there are some things, based on our discussions with the National Resource Network, plus some discussions between Norm and myself about where we see operationally, we can do some things different to help us feel a little bit more aggressive in going after some revenue that we didn't get claimed in this current year and some prior years to now. So, and based on the fact that when you look at things like EIT and other ratables, we think we should be able to get more than we get, and we do more than we get. And we had that discussion both in our prior meetings, with us, and certainly in the prior meetings, the Council and staff had with the National Resource Network, that, this may...
Yeah, I don't know if this is considered one of those questions that shouldn't be asked, but I'm gonna ask it. If a house is assessed at $100,000, and they put it on the market for $140,000, and it sells for $140,000, are we able to capture that additional assessment? I mean, are we able, and I know I'm talking about probably thousands of homes, but, and that may be more work, but are we able to capture that increase so that the new owners will...
Well, if a house, if a house is assessed or appraised at $100,000, I doubt you're gonna be able to sell that house beyond that $100,000, you're just not...
No, what I mean is, I mean, on our, on the record for...
Assessment stays the same.
Yeah.
If the house sells for $100, if it's on the market for $100,000, and it sells for $140,000, the base assessment that the county gave, it doesn't change.
Yeah.
That's what I was...
Yeah. We can recruit that difference.
Because, yeah, because I mean, I don't know, but it would be automatically reassessed. Since we have not been doing assessments.
Well, county, the county is responsible for the assessments.
Right.
And I think it's a Pennsylvania thing, that Pennsylvania doesn't do reassessments. And it's amazing to me that you don't, because a lot of values on a lot of properties all over this state are based on years ago numbers, which suppresses everybody's revenue pattern.
Mr. Jones, if I can interject here, only, I think I might be able to help out. So there is something called the county assessment law, which does authorize taxing authorities to file what's called reverse appeals, which is basically, every year, a property owner can file an appeal of their assessment, which is why you see the numbers up there, why they decrease. So what likely happened is you had a slew of property owners within Norristown who went to the Board of Assessment and said, hey, my assessment is currently too high, my property is worth less, please decrease it. And likely, either by the Board of Assessment or by the Court of Common Pleas, they reduced the assessment. What you will never see is a property owner who says, I just sold my house for more money, can you please increase my assessment?
Right.
And the Board of Assessment does not have the legal authority to go in and unilaterally make a change. In order to make that change, the county, the county commissioners have to make a determination to do an entire county-wide reassessment. Montgomery County does not do the county-wide reassessments since, I believe, 1998. They are not the oldest county that has done, and I think Bucks is worse. Chester County was recently forced by the courts to do an entire county-wide reassessment. So unless the county-wide reassessment is done, the only way I will call the release valve for a municipality in order to increase a property's assessment is to file what's called a reverse appeal. Typically, school districts take the lead because they usually have more skin in the game because they've got a higher military. Norristown area school district has filed reverse appeals. I don't know what the number is with regard to just the municipality of Norristown, but there is a mechanism, but it would really be up to the taxing authority to file that appeal. And you could only file on an annual basis, you couldn't file immediately at the time of sale, had to be filed by August 1st. It is a possibility, but I will say it is a bit of a lengthy process. Even for a residential home, if you could get it decided within three years, you're doing very well, so.
So we don't have any recourse then to pull the people involved together to say, why don't we at least look into this? I heard you say that the school district has done it.
The school district does routinely file reverse appeals. I suspect, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I suspect that they might have a policy in how they decide which properties go after, because like I said, there are costs involved. But it'd be something you probably want to discuss with the school district.
And they actually notify us when they do, when they file those appeals.
Right, because we're...
Yeah, and they send it to us, and we get it when they've got an appeal, and then we get the outcome of that appeal as well.
Is there any sense, if there be a county-wide reassessment, whether that would help reverse Norristown?
Yeah, probably.
So what has Chester County done that we're not doing as a county?
Yeah.
Well, that's because they were forced by the court, he said.
Yes.
Chester County was forced by the court as well. I'm just wondering if there's a sense, whether hypothetically if there was one, whether that would help both?
So the last, at the revenue meeting, Mr. Singh talked about permits, and people redoing stuff in their homes, and that changed in the assessed value of their properties. So are you telling me that even though our permits are allowing people to make adjustments to their houses, and I guess at that time, when we do that, we send the information to the county, they aren't changing the assessment?
So, again, if I could interject there, again, I apologize, Mr. Jones. So, yes, so the law does allow the Board of Assessment to do periodic reassessments depending on what type of permit and what type of work that was being performed. For example, if, let's say, you're upgrading your kitchen, that likely will not trigger a reassessment. But let's say you're adding on a new wing or a new bathroom, that may change your assessment. So there are certain triggering events, there are certain permits that could be pulled that would require reassessment by the Board of Assessment, but legally, they can only do it in specific circumstances. So they should be reviewing, and they should get copies of all permits, but that doesn't necessarily trigger for every property and all that reassessment. Otherwise, it'd be considered a spot assessment, and that would be illegal.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And you might know before, you've had a couple of commercial property owners who come before you mad because they made improvements and that triggered reassessments, and they gotta increase taxes, and they were kind of crying about it, so it does happen.
Have there been, this year, reassessments that triggered a higher property value?
Say that again?
Have there been any of those this year that have led to a higher property value if you've had a couple of people petitioned to have it lowered?
Yeah, yeah, there've been more that were lower, but we've had a few that were in the reverse assessment, they've been reversed, but it's a much smaller number than the ones that have been lowered.
In fact, I believe the Board had just recently approved a reverse assessment appeal for an apartment complex, and that was initiated by the school district. It was an increase in the property's assessment, and therefore, an increase in not only having to pay back taxes, a small amount, but also obviously increased assessment going forward, which means more tax dollars coming forward.
Right.
Question, so you mentioned our earned income tax. The fact that we're sitting at 2.1% and our neighbors sit at 1%, we have much lower median household income than our neighbors. What is the, what's the breakdown of why our earned income tax is much higher than our...
That was a decision by the government some time ago, so way before...
So what can a council body or local elected officials do to adjust that or correct that? Because technically, you have people making less money, people who aren't as well-to-do, are paying more taxes than the neighbors who obviously have higher incomes. So is this gonna always be like that in this town?
Well, that's a political decision, that's not a staff decision. I don't know, and maybe Patrick can tell you what the process is. If Council wanted to reduce the earned income type, I look at it like this. If you do that, you've got to come up with a place to replace that revenue you relied on to balance your budget.
I get that, but principally, you're still taxing someone who makes less money. They're paying double than what someone's paying across the room, so...
Well, you know, and I think one of the dangers, and I always say, that's what I said about... Well, I, I, you know, I, and I think one of the dangers, and I always say, that's why I said, that's what I said about the, um, the, the whole thing about comparing millages. You know, when you look at what it takes, uh, what it took whenever that EIT was decided upon to, to make budget in Norristown, you can't apply it to, let's say, what it takes to make budget and, and quit paying. Uh, uh, and I give you a perfect example. Um, I hear all the time, you know, the county's EIT, uh, the county's millage rate is only three-point-something. Well, if each one of those mills, uh, of, of the county yields fifteen-something million or a hundred and something, yeah, they can be like that, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're half-billion-dollar or more government. If your millage rate, if your millage, your one mill only yields, uh, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and you gotta come up with twelve million dollars worth of revenue just on the property tax side, and another, let's say, eight million dollars on the EIT side, for you to be able to operate at the same level as a government, if you take that out, you've got to find it somewhere. And you got to find it from a source that you know is a recurring source. Uh, so then it becomes, you're gonna have to increase your taxes, or you're gonna have to cut out a whole, uh, lot of services. Uh, because I don't thi, I don't, I don't think there's anywhere, um, short of a reassessment that gives the municipality a windfall, uh, that's gonna be an annual windfall due, due to increased property weight. Rate, so it's not gonna be any, anywhere where you can rely that you're gonna make up that revenue gap. Other communities don't need to make up that gap, because they have a, you know, they have higher assessed values with bigger yields on what they have in taxes. So they can have a three-mill, um, uh, budget, uh, three, uh, you know, have a three-mill budget that yields, you know, fifty million dollars, as opposed to our fourteen-mill budget that yields twelve thousand, twelve million dollars, yeah.
Is there a possibility that if the county did a county-wide reassessment, that the assessment could be lower?
I think you're gonna see some of, a mix, yes. You, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna see a mix, and, and certainly, a property, let's say that a property, when it was last assessed, was a relatively new property, a much newer property, and it's gone dilapidated, that it's gonna decrease in, in the rea, in the reassessment. So you're gonna, you're gonna lose value based on, on the reassessment, yes.
So I guess it's, one of the things that Mr. Singh is doing with this county municipal-wide code violation doing is really trying to prevent that from occurring.
Right.
Is that the next time, because when people do work on their properties to clear off the code violations, that that will work to.
Increase.
Increase the assessed value when the county does that.
Exactly. And, and the thing, the, the good thing I like about what Amerinda is doing, also, if you recall, he's actually now, by doing what he's doing now, just from the external look, he's targeting where we need to focus our attention to do that most. And that's the, that's the, that's the first area, and certainly, they'll be doing all of them, but what we're gonna know at the end of his process is whether we need to hit hardest in terms of that, that happening, so it won't be such an adverse impact on, on the municipality.
So I think if we had a lower millage rate, if our assessed value of the properties was increased by ten percent, it's necessarily, it's, it's actually a tax increase for the property owners.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than us actually raising millage.
Right, right. So, um, again, when, when we last, uh, approached you, we had, uh, 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 revenue projections uh, related to, um, thirty-four million, five forty-five eighty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, the thirty-four million, five forty, uh, five eighty-two is what we're projecting in expenditures. What we're projecting in revenues is a thirty-three, one fif- fifteen. When we last came before you, I anticipated deficit between those two was one-point-seven, almost one-point-eight million dollars. So through the work that we've done since then, in terms of increasing, uh, some revenues in terms of, for instance, uh, by, um, EIT and other things, um, we were able to shorten that gap uh, by, by about four-hundred thousand dollars. So now we're looking at about a, a one-point-four as in turn, in, in, instead of a one-point-eight million gap between what we're projecting we, we will, uh, get in revenues and what we project we need to do, uh, as in, in order to actually do the work, uh, of the government. So here's where all that revenue is, and again, if you look at those locally-enabling taxes, property taxes are about thirty-four, thirty-eight percent of our budget. When you start talking about taking away those locally-enabling taxes, that's thirty-five percent of your budget. So inside that mix of EIT and all of those other things, if you take that revenue away, you know, the, the questions and the discussions you all have to have as a council then is, so where are you gonna get the new revenue? And what services are you gonna reduce or eliminate in order to be able to do that? In order, in order to be able to, um, accomplish a budget that operates the government? Because if you take out any one of those lynchpin sources, uh, sources, you're gonna come up in deficits, you're gonna eat whatever it is, uh, you, you look at that eleven-point-six, uh, in, in, uh, enabling tax revenue, even if you took four million of that, if you took three million of that, you got a fund balance right now of, of around, between six and eight, uh, six and seven million dollars. Is that where you're gonna take it? Because that's only gonna last you that one year, and, and then you're gonna jump straight into deficit probably the following year, uh, and, and, and real deficit, uh, the following year. So that becomes, uh, the challenge in doing that. But those are the sources of where, when you, when you're looking at it, and you got three-quarters of your revenue come from those, uh, those things, uh, that, that becomes the challenge. Uh, we did, uh, again, in terms of some sources of revenue, we did look at, uh, creating some additional things, and we'll talk about that, uh, in, in a min, in a minute. But again, because you're government, uh, that, no, that, just, it's not money. Grants are for projects, uh, grants will, will support, uh, projects, will support on a limited basis administration, but they're really looking for kind of bricks and mortar, outcome things, or things like, for instance, doing this NRIN project, uh, that Heather Val brought to us to, to, to help us, but it doesn't really provide, uh, any kind of, uh, funding to sustain, uh, a government's operations. Now, there's no, there's no, no grants for local government operations. What they expect, the federal government, state government, and the state government is, and I'm just not talking about Commonwealth, every state government is, is notorious for creating mandates for local governments and not providing any funding to do that. And so they look to the local government, "Well, you decide how you're gonna get money. We just want you to do what we want you to do." And so that becomes a conundrum for us in terms of doing that, so.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sure.
Um, you, you're talking about, you know, how to wanna get money, and how grants, you know, can help with projects, and that's one of the things that the NLC does. It opens up our eyes to different projects that we could apply for grants, for example, um, the opioid.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there are grants for that, that we need to look into.
Right.
There are different grants that can help us with the things that we're trying to spend money on, that will help us keep our budget not to be raised so high or too minimal.
Right, and you're, you're a hundred percent right, and, and when we go after these grants, and we, we compete for them, and we win them, we apply, you know, we apply the funds where you can, uh, to those grants. But that's not gonna have anything to do, at the end of the day, with what your bottom line is in terms of operating the government. It's gonna fund that project, as you know, it's gonna fund that project, it's gonna, if there's some staffing for that project, it's gonna fund that staffing for that project. Usually, our projects aren't about a whole lot of staffing, it's about delivering an end, deliverable, and then there's some administrative costs, usually ten percent or less that's allowable on the grant. So let's say you got a hundred thousand dollar grant, you got a ten thousand dollar worth of James time, or whoever's time, and police time can be funded by that. So it's not a windfall for operations at all. It just, you know, it might offset a little bit for that project.
So, um, the question I have is in regards to the property taxes. You know, one thing about Norristown people saying that, uh, "We don't collect enough taxes," and I remember last year, we had gotten to a number, I forget, it was pretty high.
Yeah.
Ninety, ninety.
Yeah.
I, I want Grant to answer this, because, you know, we, we always get, you know, we always get that, that, that question that, uh, "We're not collecting the property taxes, which is from slum lords and commercial, all the properties." So can you give us the number?
Yeah.
Of the property taxes that we do collect?
Yeah, we get, we get typically about ninety-seven-point-two percent of, of taxes. And what we're doing, even in that, it's not like we've abandoned that other two-point-eight percent. You know, we're tied up in litigation, trying to do the things that we can, uh, we can do that. Uh, you know, property owners, big and small, know the game. And in, and the game in Pennsylvania is, there's a delay process that they have, it's gotta go through share itself. People, there are folks who intentionally wait for it to get to the eleventh hour before they take that title. Now, eleventh hour could be two years down the road. And so we do what we need to do, both, uh, in that. I think one of the things, and, and we, again, we've been talking about it. How can we be more aggressive in terms of getting delinquent taxes? We talked about things just the other day, talked about, and I, you know, and I, I asked a question, you know, delinquent tax sales, is that something that happens in Pennsylvania? I know that's something I've done before, where rather than us spend a whole lot of time, uh, as, you know, as the organization, uh, pursuing delinquent taxes, you actually sell the delinquent tax bills to a third party, uh, and, and we get the revenue for those delinquent tax bills, and then they, they collect it, and they tack on their fees with the delinquent property owners to get what they need to do for doing the work on it. So, don't know, I'm not sure if that's yet allowed in Pennsylvania, but it's something. Those are the kinds of things we're, we're talking about, looking at.
Then can you give a, a, a better explanation in regards to the local enabling taxes and what that, what that represents?
Yes, it's, it's, uh, you know, we, we have, it's the head count tax, all kind of that, all, all kind of things. It's, uh, employment tax, uh, local employment income tax, I see EIT tax. So it's those taxes that, uh, are allowed by the, the state government for localities, uh, to, uh, to capture that revenue. Uh, some of that revenue is passed through revenue as well, so, uh, i- it's, it's all of those things that are related to, uh, what folks see, I guess from the legislative standpoint, of impact of living in a community, and how do you, as a government, legislate for additional revenue to do that.
So the three percent of the taxes that aren't collected annually, do we know who those three percent are? You know, you take them from the map of our town, and we're collecting ninety-seven percent, there's probably a good thousand to two thousand people that are in that list of not paying taxes. Or somebody's, it could vary, they could be, they can own multiple properties, they could own.
Yeah.
Expect, I mean, you could, you could collect taxes from individual homeowners with homes with a value of seventy, eighty thousand dollars, but if you got people out there with four-hundred thousand dollar properties, and, and they're not paying taxes, do we know who these people are?
Yes, we do, we do, and, and again, it's, like I said earlier, it's not that we're saying, okay, that's three percent we aren't gonna get, that's, that's, that's money we're pursuing as well, but it's, it's a process.
But we know who these people are.
Yes, 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 we, we absolutely know, it's, it's not an anonymous, uh, three percent, we know exactly. So they go through the process of, you know, being, you know, you're delinquent, you're getting notified you're delinquent. You do all of those things with, with a delinquent property owner of, "We want you to pay, we want you to pay, we want you to pay." And typically, uh, folks who are delinquent, that when you finally get them to that point where you got your, your, your hand around the throat and you get it, they'll pay it, and then they'll go back into that same cycle, uh, same cycle again. Some of it is, 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 again, absenteeism, where things, properties change hands, but we go through the process of, of tracking that, uh, tracking that down. And, and what we're talking about, we were talking about, uh, last week is, okay, so how can we be even more aggressive uh, than we are, uh, in doing that, and tracking down, uh, delinquents? And one of the things, again, in, in my history of even having to deal with delinquent, uh, property tax collection especially, uh, if you, as, as government, and I've been the manager of governments who are very aggressive in collecting delinquent taxes, has some of the exact same large property owner.
Some tax, some towns actually have a tax collector.
We, we do too. We, we, you know, our finance director is our tax collector. So we, we have a tax collector also, but we also utilize outside services like Portnoy to, to do that collection for, so with, but what I was saying is, if you're that aggressive as a government, sometimes folks make appeals, and I've had, like, councilmen, "Ah, don't be so hard on them." But that's why we like to form a, a third party, let the third party be hard on them, because sometimes folks come to the nice councilmen and tell stories about how bad the government is. So we, we do, uh, do that, but we're not, we're not excusing anybody from talking, uh, from paying taxes. We just have to go through the process we're given.
Grant, I just have an observation as, um, reviewing and, and looking at the numbers. Um, so we had a, a carry of over one-million-dollar deficit in twenty-seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And we're now down to one-point-four, which three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand of that was additional to that fire, police, the things that we hired for public safety, correct?
No, no, the three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand i- i- of the, of the increase was that not from the hires themselves, but from the salary increases, the contracted salary increases that go with that staff, and then the other was salary increases, uh, for non-labor staff. So it wasn't from the hiring of new staff, they were already hired. And so now we have to account for what those contracted.
Union.
Union agreements and, and were going forward.
As a result of the new hires the year before?
As a result of all of.
The total.
Yeah, so new hires came into that, but it's a result of all, uh, you know, contract was signed in twenty-sixteen, for instance, so twenty, and, you know, the three, four-year contract.
These are labor agreements and things that.
Yes.
I only say that to say, that was an increase that leaves about a little less than two-hundred thousand dollars, or, you know, not even a hundred thousand dollars, um, between, with taking that out, which is contractual, there's nothing that we would have done about that.
Right.
We're still a hundred thousand dollars over the one-million-dollar deficit that we had prior to the year. So I'm saying all that to say, I don't think we're doing that bad.
No.
As far as managing the budget, when we're looking at the actual increase outside of what was completely out of our control is a little over a hundred thousand.
Right, I, I mean.
I think with the onboarding of Mr. Buck, since you guys, um, will be able to scrub some more, and with the aggressive, um, you know, going after some of the revenue that's out there.
Right.
I don't know if we'll be able to the millions, but I'm confident that we'll be able to.
Well, I, I think you hit the nail on the head, and the thing about it is this, I mean, consistently, your budgets have been, I, the, the biggest one I can remember is a three-point-something, uh, increase in budget. And what organization, public or private, doesn't have a cost increase related just to the cost of paper, to the cost of water, to the cost of gasoline, to the cost of ice, uh, salt materials for doing that? And you add on to that, you do have labor agreements, et cetera, that factor in it. So if, if I was coming to you, I, I wouldn't, I'd probably walk if I had to say, "Oh, I'm coming to you with a fifteen percent," or e- e- even an eight, unless something catastrophic happens. Uh, your, you know, one-point-nine percent increase, you know, that's, that's normal, that's normal.
Managers have another comment on the assessment values. Um, we do have folks that are on fixed income, that however they get their property, their properties maintained or fixed, they're still on a fixed income, and if their taxes go up because their, their value was increased, they're still gonna be impacted on that level personally, not as an entire community. But that individual homeowner, if they're still a senior, and maybe their family picks up their property and their assessment value goes up, their taxes go up. So just like it can go either way, we're still gonna be impacting people that are low-income, don't necessarily, we don't know where that source of income came for them to fix their property, but that assessment goes up, so do their taxes.
I've got a comment. Um, you know, where we came from, from two thousand and thirteen to now, has been a, a great difference. Um, when we're looking at the overall, uh, things that's happening throughout the country, you know, that comes from the top on down into the local, which definitely affects us at the end of the day. And when it's, when it's coming from the state down to the local, it's gonna affect us. And then we gotta find a way to, to make stuff happen, even though it's gonna hurt people, and, and it's unfortunate, because other people are not looking at the state representatives and stuff like that to make things happen. They're looking at us as, as a, as a way to blame us for whatever is happening throughout the United States and America. So we gotta look at those factors also. So we gotta look at those factors also. But we have come a long way since two thousand thirteen, when we're seven orders behind.
I think, thank you. I think one of the things, and I can, I can, you brought it up and mentioned, for instance, that whole issue about council has to look at the stormwater issue. Well, that wasn't something that we decided as, as a mandate, we know operationally that we got sinkholes and we know all of that things, we talked about it. But the state decided years ago, all this stormwater stuff is a local thing to deal with and we are giving you a mandate that you deal with the costs associated with relieving all the stormwater issues in your community. You gotta find a way to pay for it. And the tool to do that is a stormwater utility or taxes. I mean, those are the, because, uh, you know, there are some assistance you'll get against, again, like you talked before, if you put in a stormwater utility and implement a stormwater uh utility fee, that triggers grants available to support things you wanna do project wise, like if you have to build a great big, big dam or retention thing or do some infrastructure work related to uh stormwater, you can get grants to do it because you have a utility and the government, the local government is putting skin in the game to do it. But it's not gonna be something that any of those other bodies are gonna say, and even federal grants you can get as well, that any of those bodies are gonna say, well, we know you need it, so we're gonna pay for it. It, it, it's, it's not gonna happen. So a lot of the mandates we have is local government uh start from the state and some of them emanate from the federal government as well.
But what you said, you're not only discussing potential rates that, that are gonna come along to help offset some of the costs in the infrastructure, but you're also looking at raising taxes also. So not only are you looking at future rates, future monthly or, or weekly, monthly or yearly fees, increased costs in the different departments and, you know, you're still looking at ta- taxes and fees in the next two to three years, which
Yeah.
really looks bad, you know, in my opinion. If you're putting in stormwater utility fees, you're putting things in, so what's the sense of going back on the other hand and raising taxes?
Well, I will say, I will say this, if you don't deal with stormwater and stormwater, you're gonna have to raise taxes to match what you would do with as stormwater. The difference about, uh, let's say a stormwater utility fee as opposed to a tax, at least with a stormwater utility fee, nonprofits have to pay, governments have to pay, school districts have to pay. And, and everybody has an opportunity in that process to do some things because you give them guidelines in terms of how to lower the fees. Uh, but if you did it, if you said, we're not gonna do a stormwater fee and you got a giant sinkhole or you got a giant project you, you gotta get done and the state is saying this, then it's gonna be taxpayers, just taxpayers that are gonna bear, bear the burden of that. And it's not gonna be spread to any of the two hundred and twenty-nine uh nonprofits and not goes, including churches, it's not gonna be spread to the local government, I mean, to the county government, it's not gonna be spread to any of those entities, it's just taxpayers. So a stormwater utility fee, just like when we talk about uh other user fees, whether it be recreation or, or those things, fees are for people who utilize the service. And so it, so that it doesn't get spread uh unfairly to all taxpayers, that's the whole point of that.
That makes sense to me. I mean, really and truly, that's very elementary.
And, and let's say what it is, it's preliminary talks, not that we're actually going to do it now or later or whenever.
Right.
It's something that the council as a whole has to talk about first.
Absolutely.
And then give staff, you know, the directions of what needs to be done, not the opposite way around.
Absolutely.
Didn't, didn't the state give us a deadline to get this done as well?
Since nineteen seventy-eight.
No, they since nineteen seventy, but we, we do.
No, I'm saying, it was, it was, it was.
No, but he takes the state's.
And pushing it down.
Yes, it did, yes.
Yes.
And what, do you member?
I don't, off the top of my head, remember the date, but it's funny. Yeah, but it's imminent, it's like in the next two, two years or so, that we have to have a plan in place and that we have to have a funding mechanism to be able to, to do this thing in place uh within the next two years.
So if I may just, just comment, um, we not also have to make these difficult decisions for today, we're actually making these difficult decisions for the future. Um, so when we talk about senior citizens on a fixed income, they are also entitled to home project improvements that, you know, working class families don't get. So um sometimes we wanna be careful when we start talking about the seniors constantly because now what we have is the millennials that are gonna be coming through soon. And the, the system that we're going to adopt actually wouldn't fit the millennials. So we wanna be careful when we discuss senior citizens who actually have affordable housing, who actually can have either keep
Rebates.
Rebates, keep Norristown beautiful, uh, what's the camp that came through that actually does
Worked.
prepares to, prepares to the homes. So, so there are some advantages, there are not, there aren't just disadvantages um when we talk about planning for the future. I know one of my roles was uh as a council member is coming, it's like, when we make these decisions, they're not for today, you know, they're, they're, they're for the future. And then when we talk about stormwater, we're talking, that also goes hand in hand with economic development. So if we're gonna increase economic development, we've gotta have the stormwater in place to actually support it. So if we don't have the support, then how can we continue with economic development? So there, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle and when we say raising taxes, sometimes it, it isn't a bad thing. But if you look on the sheet when we didn't raise taxes and we saw how much money we were taking from our reserves, that means you gotta start thinking differently. So for instance, if you had your paycheck, you get your bi-weekly paycheck and you're just still just writing out the bills and it's just flat rate, you're not doing anything to increase your bank account, but you just still go on flat rate because you're, you're playing it safe. Where, where do we get the opportunity to become creative? Which leads me into my next step, which is NLC and PML. When we talk about these insurance costs, I'm hoping that our representatives from PML, NLC can check to see if there's discounted programs for us. Um, whether it's a thousand dollars, whether it's fifteen hundred dollars, there's an opportunity to decrease some of these causes when we began to be more creative. And I just feel like we need to be more creative when we're doing the budget. One other piece, um, recreation operations, we always talk about the youth, what we're gonna do for the youth, there's nothing to do for the youth. But when I look at this pie chart for seven percent, I really feel that that should be higher. While we talk about the future and we're talking about the youth, because we don't just want to be in a sitting spot. We want higher expectations. So I, I, I think uh for future use, I think that we all should take a more proactive approach when doing the budget and becoming more creative.
You mentioned that thing about stormwater management and there was a really interesting segment on NPR this evening that talked about climate change and the effects that climate change has on our infrastructure and what we're gonna do about it. And there are architects and engineers who are looking at climate change and trying to build the potential change in how the environment is gonna affect their buildings because they want their buildings to stand. And how are they gonna change their building practices to accommodate the environmental changes that are coming due to climate change?
Right.
So that's one of the things that we need to, to keep in the back of our mind is that, you know, even though we're not next to the ocean, we do have a river running right next to our town and whether or not the climate change impacts to the weather or going to cause additional flooding or cause additional stormwater that's gonna be coming into Norristown.
Right.
We have to take that into consideration for the future so that we can protect the infrastructure that we have now.
Right, right. Yeah, you hit it on the head and that's a large part of what that NDPS requirement has to do with the state is looking at those, those kind of uh impacts to the community and, and we all know, again, from the discussions we had, you know, if we have, if we have a flood issue here, it's multiple communities that are gonna be hit by that, so we can't ignore it. It, it, you know, our community is first to us, of course, but it, it's gonna hit multiple communities and a lot of what we get is runoff from other communities uh to that dam and down through this cover, so it, it, it has to be something.
That's why with snow removal.
Yeah.
I mean, climate change is a huge impact on the amount of snow that we have and the amount of snow removal we're gonna have to do and the impacts to the uh racing and things that we have to take into consideration for the, how the roads are gonna be breaking down.
Right, right. So uh this is just a look, again, at the variance between what we're looking at uh related to projected revenues uh between what was adopted in twenty eighteen and what we're projecting for twenty nineteen. Again, uh, the goal is, is to be as conservative as, as, as uh we can. We also looked at the trend of what's, what's been happening. Uh, and, and again, we did, you know, make some revenue adjustments, uh, but these are what we're seeing, uh, we need to be both uh looking at where we think we're gonna have uh declines and increases. The other thing is, is, is to consider, again, a budget is, is an estimate. So this isn't the law one way or the other in terms of uh what's going to happen, but it certainly is the guidance and I think we have a fiscal responsibility. Uh, my philosophy and, you know, and Noah's philosophy, any budget director works with me philosophy, be conservative uh on the, on the symphony of any projections one way or the other. And if something happens different to the good, gravy on the biscuit. If it doesn't, uh, at least, you know, we're, we're being conservative in our estimates so uh that we're not unrealistic and, and get hit with a real, uh, real shock. And, and what we're trying to do in this is saying, our anticipation is uh that, you know, we're gonna have a revenue gap, let's plan for how we adjust that revenue gap. If at the end of the day, we don't have that revenue gap that we're projecting, if it's lower than that, all to the good, uh, you keep, you know, you keep your, start to replenish your reserves where you need to be in case of some disaster.
Crandall, what is that non-business permits?
Fourth line.
Oh, non-business permits, which one is that?
Public works.
Public, oh, that's this, that's public works sidewalks related permits, uh permits to do uh, for uh utilities to do their digging and all of that stuff. Uh, you know, the cost of digging a hole, running uh conduit, et cetera, uh, so we what uh.
Why do we see that much of a decrease in?
Because that, that, uh, what was uh adopted in twenty eighteen, um, our experience is more, bit more like twenty nineteen projections, so we didn't wanna put a.
Is the twenty eighteen, is that as a result of the justice campus and all the work that's being done up there, is that why that number is so high and you projected to go down? Or?
Well, see, the permits for the justice department, for justice center and all that wouldn't be with public works.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, no, that would, that would be over in Amerinda's, Amerinda's shop. And we gotta, we pretty much gotta handle on what that is, you gotta permit fee uh in place, scheduling place, they're gonna pay with a permit schedule uh on the house for it.
Crandall.
Yes.
Um, some of the projects that we completed in the past few years, Luxor and Montgomery Park, even with Pendot moving from the start into Norristown, are we capturing the revenue on these projects?
Yes.
Or is it something that we were, we're expecting down the line?
Yeah, well, some of the EIT piece of it, we, we capture. I mean, because E, uh, EIT and I'm, and I, I would, again, tell you, one of the things we talked about earlier is being more aggressive and looking at that and that's some of the stuff we've been talking about. Because uh we know that some of those folks who went into those uh, uh, into those, let's say Luxor units, some are from out of town, some are from in town who wanted to do different. But anybody, as you know, who uh moves here, they're gonna pay local tax, if you work here, you're gonna pay that tax. Uh, or if you work somewhere, if you live here, you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay that tax as well. So we're capturing that and that's part of the scrub we do uh with folks like Portnoy uh who work on, on our, to capture all of the E, EIT tax. We also know that, you know, Luxor uh both wanted to, Luxor had the Lurda and so we got that schedule plugged into it. We know uh that there's gonna be a bump up, uh, a ten percent jump from the prior year and it'll, it'll keep them. So we got that programmed into what we do in terms of numbers, so yeah. And I, I think it was the, was it the EIT folks that we got the contract where they're actually going to scrub the large businesses uh for uh employees uh to make sure that we're capturing uh the EIT from those, from those businesses as well.
Is that private and public entities?
I know it, um, I have to, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it is, but the one, one thing I can tell you from a public standpoint, they're much more conscientious about doing it than, than the private sector because a large part of the time, some of the time, we, you know, if you, the kind of monitoring on the public sector as far as audits that they have, both with state, uh, is much more, that's much more oversight. So we tend to find it's usually private entities that have, that have the challenge with that. So we talked about it, again, I quickly go through, we talk about it so much of the time uh in terms of some of our opportunities. Yes, we are gonna ask for the voluntary uh contributions uh for, for pilot, uh, but it's voluntary, so you're gonna get what you're gonna get, you don't have any uh from, in terms of nonprofits and, 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 you know, forget it, for local governments, I mean, for a little too taxing, but certainly in terms of nonprofit, uh, you don't have any control. Uh, we did small things like the uh block party fee, we've got uh the, you know, the fee schedules available for folks who wanna look at the entirety of it. Uh, we did some increases in terms of recreation, I think that was a big change in terms of, again, going from that whole uh paid by the number of people thing, which you don't have any control over, to an hourly uh process um uh to generate new revenue, the facilities fees that we're gonna be charging. We really believe uh that once we're looking at a spring, uh, our, our spring opening to be able to do, start making rentals available, particularly on that first level of the building, we really believe that, you know, some of that use that we'll get from rentals, uh, from non-rec programming as well, is gonna be uh a good addition. We've been very conservative first year and, and we're gonna see. Um, public works, we, we did uh put in a request for some increases in the fees uh related to permits and applications relate uh for public work. And again, these are user fees, most of the user fees related to public work have to do uh with utility companies and, and, and commercial entities uh for, for work that they're doing. Um, and then codes enforcement, Amerinda, I'm not gonna even attempt to go through all of the stuff that Amerinda discussed, I would encourage anybody who's watching our video uh when we post this on the web, to go up to the last video and you'll get a, a very good description of why and what uh those fees are. Uh, but we think it best to help us country, certainly capture revenue better, but also to make the process uh fairer uh for the municipality based on the fact that the amount of work uh that we put in uh to doing permitting. The one thing I can say consistently is uh our service, the service that we provide uh in the permitting areas, both in, whether it be public works or in, in the coast, but is, has been significantly undervalued uh for years and, and this is not profit making, this is us trying to recover the cost of what it actually go, uh, cost to do, to uh go out and provide a service. These services are spread to the whole community, they are user-based fees, which is also only the folks who need these services are gonna uh, uh, have to deal with. So other things, I just alluded to that uh point, you know, that twenty, two hundred and fifty-six non-taxable properties in this municipality, two hundred and twenty-nine of them are nonprofit organization, the other twenty-seven of them are either Montgomery County or Norristown School District. So one of the things you talk about and why our budget is like it is, you know, you, you, and part of that whole apples and oranges discussion about Norristown is who else is the county seat? Nobody else uh in the county has as much non-taxable property uh in its municipality as we do. So if all of that other prop, those other properties are non-taxable, we wouldn't be having this discussion uh about a budget gap, we'd actually be talking about where you're gonna put your budget surplus. But that's part, that's, that's part of the challenge of being a nonprofit organization, that's part of why we're gonna go and solicit those two twenty-nine to, to contribute to other folks. That's part of why we're going to go and solicit those two twenty-nine to, to contribute, other folks have done it. There's not a wingfall of folks who have a patriotic local heart that says, we're going to give money. Uh, there are few of them who will contribute something, but, you know, we won't ignore that.
Can you explain why it's only going to be the two twenty-nine?
Right, well, because, um, county government and school districts, they are other taxing entities. We're not going to tax other taxing entities. By law, there, there's no requirement that any of these folks, uh, give us anything. And so, certainly I know in terms of the past years, I know, uh, the county used to, uh, give, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars or so a year, uh, in terms of, uh, contributions to the municipality. Uh, that went away, but one of the things they, uh, did to kind of offset that was start to, uh, privatize their facilities so that we get tax money off of the facilities that they, uh, they operate out of, rather than those properties actually being not totally nonprofit so far. When they're renting space like they are in the health, in the, uh, in the health center, et cetera, we actually get taxes on that property now because they're renting that space. So they've done, they've done some other things, uh, to, uh, to offset that. And then, but their governments as well, their taxing bodies as well.
Randall, can you give me a little more, because I'm in nonprofit? Um, how payment in lieu of taxes, how this works and who does, or what's the incentive? Or is it just like, oh, you got extra money, we're going to give it to the municipality?
That's, 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 that's all you can do. It's, it's a, it's a good, you know, we don't go so far as Sally Struthers back in the, in the, in the day when she do a claim. But we, you know, we've got a letter where we're going to say, you know, we provide services to every entity in this municipality. It calls for police, it calls for fire, it calls for the roads, it calls for all of that. While we know you're not a, uh, you're not, you're tax exempt, we would just ask that you consider making a contribution to the local government to help upset some of the costs that your being here, uh, imposes on, on, uh, on residents as well.
And you estimate that twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue is going to come from the generosity of nonprofits?
No, where, where do you see?
I'm, I'm looking at your, um, the revenue breakdown, this pilot, twenty-one thousand, but twenty-two thousand, is that the cost?
No, no, the, the revenue, uh, breakdown for that, associated that, we already have a pilot in place. Uh, remember the, uh, the Luxor two?
Right.
Was a pilot, uh, because, uh, we didn't do another LURDA, we actually did a pilot and that schedule brings, uh, brings some money in for that. So, uh, instead of a LURDA and a tax abatement, there's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, so you can do a pilot with a taxable entity that, if they've got a LURDA, then that's something that they could do? Because they're not a nonprofit?
Yeah, yeah, they're not. But, uh, so the payment in lieu of taxes is, uh, for instance, to incentivize the purchase of, of seven seventy, that I'm not supposed to say ever again, but nine, nine hundred Luxor. To, to incentivize the, the developer to actually do that, put that property back on the ta, tax road.
Right.
Uh, we forgave, the county forgave, the school district forgave, liens, so that that property could be acquired. We all got a cash payment out during the course of that, uh, first year. And then instead of that person, that, uh, property being put on the LURDA, we put him on a schedule of payment in lieu of taxes. That's gradually going up as well.
That's Luxor two that's generated? So what other, because that's a unique situation that you probably pray never happens again, but what other opportunities like that?
Yeah.
Would, you know, with the taxable entity versus nonprofits, I guess, what's the number? Is it the, the seven hundred dollars that came from, from nonprofits? What's, what's the nonprofit?
I don't even know that we, you know, I think you might have had a couple of folks who said, we love y'all and I don't even know what's the seven hundred dollars.
Maybe we need to throw a little party so that they could tell their friends or something because I'm just curious.
Yeah, but, but, uh, in, in terms of payments in lieu of taxes, it's really not an unusual thing. I think in, 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 in a lot of places, uh, for instance, that don't have LURDA, LURDAs or something, you know, or, and, and I've done it in other governments before. If a viable project comes in, you can negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes for a project if, if the body chooses to do it. Uh, so it's, it's not unique. It was in that instance, uh, to get the albatross of nine hundred Luxor, what was formerly named. In that instance, uh, we didn't, nobody had an appetite for another LURDA.
Right.
Uh, but that was an appetite, let's, let's get this thing back on the road, uh, on the tax road, let's do something. So instead of paying taxes, we get the actual tax to help with the, the, the offset, the money for the renovation and the reconstruction. It happened all over there and to get the project up and running as it is, uh, we agreed to a tax, the three bodies agreed to a tax schedule, uh, that was in lieu of what would have been normally taxed. So that's, that's what that is. But I've done, uh, we call them, uh, Felo, where I came from, uh, fees in lieu of taxes instead of payments. But I've done that in other places where you negotiate for an economic development project. Uh, if the taxes were, uh, you know, going to be stymied a project, then let's negotiate a deal that, where you don't have a LURDA, for instance, and, and you have that here as well, that you pay this schedule in, in lieu of the taxes for a target period of time.
Okay.
Randall, those, um, so of the, we had, we talked about the past two hundred and fifty-six non-taxable entities. We want to identify which ones were, you know, out of commission, not running. Um, I'll give you an example, the Agape Church that's actually being, you know, fixed up, I'm seeing a lot of work being done. So are we still on that track to identify how many of those churches that are just not functioning? Um, and when I think of the county and the school district, I think of Roosevelt Field in particular, or, you know, future potentials that that property can become a, a, a revenue generator? And when I think about the county, I think about the county prison.
Yeah.
So are we addressing those, those properties that are just sitting?
Yes, and we've, and, and we've had discussions about those two, uh, properties specifically. Uh, so we've had, we definitely had some discussions about those two properties specifically. I say it, I leave it at that, uh, but, but yes, yes, they are, they are, they are, they are. We know the properties, that's why we know there are two hundred and twenty-nine of them. We know, we know the properties that aren't. Uh, the challenge becomes, you know, when a property is like, like abandoned or whatever, you know, we don't want to take them on as, as our property and we don't want to buy them. But I will share with you that, um, we've, uh, been in discussions and you all have been in the discussions about land banks. And I think the county has actually expressed an interest to reconsider that now. And so, and that, and that's a way to deal with, you know, some of those properties that are underutilized. The challenge, and, and again, I think land banks are a good thing. The thing we didn't want to do is where we manage, I think, a, a land bank and what that, and the county might do it. Uh, so we, we're getting ready to have that discussion, that's going to come to you all at appropriate time to see what it is. Uh, you all are interested in doing in terms of a partnership like that, to go back to your original cut. We know, that's why we know they're two twenty-nine, we know exactly where they are. But as you also know, the various stages of where people are with their property and how you get your hands on doing something with that property is tangled up patently.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, if I could interject there, from the legal perspective, uh, when a property is determined to be tax exempt, that's by the board of assessment. The property remains tax exempt until either one, somebody files an appeal challenging the tax exemption, or two, there's a transfer of the property. Even if the property is transferred to another non-exempt entity, they still immediately lose their exemption and the new entity has to file for an exemption. So if you have property A who has a church and that property owner has ceased doing church activities, the board of assessment will never change the exemption code unless somebody files an appeal to remove it, unless the church sells the building to something else. So Mr. Jones's point about a property being abandoned or not being used, unfortunately, these for board of assessment purposes remain exempt unless somebody goes in and you spend the money to challenge the exemption status by claiming they're no longer using it for exempt purposes.
That somebody can be the municipality?
That someone can be any of the taxing authorities, which will typically, again, be the school district because they have the most to gain from it. Um, but any taxing authority has a right to file that, that, uh, appeal.
So what if it completely crumbled and it's no longer existing? Does that turn it from a former nonprofit to maybe open?
It would still remain an exempt, it would still be under the exempt code. You'd have to be able to, even a land, because you have to prove that the land is no longer being used for their tax exempt purpose.
I just see it as an opportunity to, to bring in revenue.
No, and, and, and for what it's worth, I have, for other municipalities, if I become aware of something going on in an activity or there's been a recent transfer, I have contacted the board of assessment directly to find out, hey, are you guys aware this has been transferred? I don't see the exemption code having been removed yet. As a friendly reminder, could you take a look at this? And usually they are pretty good about doing that. And again, that's just trying to be fair to everybody because it's, it would be unfair to, to your neighbor. Exactly. Again, I apologize, Mr. Jones, want to interject.
You're fine, you're fine, great, thank you. Great. So, this is again, just, uh, goes back to the information the council and, and team have been presented and discussed, uh, several times now in terms of, uh, the blue area being what our fund balance is. And we right now are looking at a fund balance of almost eight million dollars for twenty eighteen. But as you see, by not addressing revenue sources and the, against the, what is really a natural rise in the cost of just doing business, uh, based on where we're projecting, uh, if you, if it just happened, you know, in a, in a very static environment, we're looking at, uh, our seven point eight million dollar savings account, uh, dwindling down by twenty twenty-three to, uh, less than a, less than a million. Now, a lot of things that are going to happen between here and twenty twenty-three that are under consideration. But the one thing we know that's going to happen is that the cost of doing business is not going to decrease, it's going to in, increase all that time. And so what we've been doing in this process with the National Resource Network is to come up with a strategy for us to how, to make sure we keep, uh, our, our, our fund balance, uh, because the typical goal is that you have in your fund balance between seventeen and twenty-five percent of your, uh, of your general fund revenue and then fund balance. Typically that is, is about three to four months of what happens if the world got on fire, got, got on fire and you needed to run the government operations, uh, that gives you the ability to do that for, for, uh, three to four months.
Can you, uh, can you tell us where the National Resource Center came from?
Sure. Yes, uh, National Resource Network was, uh, came to us as a result of, uh, council members, uh, Lewis and council member, uh... You know what, it's, 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 it's a Val Cooper. Council member Val Cooper, um, eh, 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 going to, attending a, a, a National League of Cities event. They brought back a, a, a grant, uh, application notice to us to say, hey, we need to look at this. Uh, but as a result of the fact that we kind of knew that we needed to get a handle on, uh, sustainability, uh, for the organization. And so, uh, as a result of that, we applied for the grant and we won the grant. Uh, there was a matching portion, uh, to that grant of about, uh, sixty thousand dollars. And we got, I'd say it's well over, it, their target is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of technical assistance in doing that. I think we stretched them beyond the, beyond the limit because they have been, up until last Friday, involved in budget discussions with us with it. That's still a time that they're going to come to you all because we think, uh, based on where we are, and I know that they said to you in one of the presentations, we all knew, uh, based on their expertise, your own staff's, uh, expertise in there, we all knew that to get to sustainability, you're not going to do it overnight. We all recognized that there was going to be some level of use of fund balance probably, uh, this year. Uh, but what we've done now is, and we finished up, they're going to come to you about it, we've at least now got a strategy and plan. Uh, that beginning, it actually begins this year in twenty-eight, in twenty nineteen, it begins in twenty nineteen. But we've got each year a theme of how to get us, uh, to sustainability by the end of the process. And that's going to, uh, be represented, uh, not only in terms of council goals, uh, but operationally the kinds of things we're doing to address what you all have identified as your priorities to get to sustainability. So it's been an excellent experience and I think the level of transparency about how we're performing going forward is going to be, uh, very different in terms of the metrics we use, uh, for performance going forward, beginning in, uh, twenty nineteen.
Land, I want just one quick comment. Um, oftentimes, people don't understand the value in networking.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, when you come from a small place like Norristown and you attend these functions and you attend the workshops, valuable information that we can bring back, of course, we're not going to use it all, you know, it doesn't all appropriately fit Norristown. But there's so much information to be learned that in years past, Norristown didn't have a seat at the table because we weren't involved. And now it's, it's making a difference.
Yeah, I, I think between that, the sustainability grant, you guys got us in there, you've just given us another one we're looking at. Uh, so, and, and, and I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, as a manager, um, who's done this around the country, it is the bodies that go out and get that national networking, that national education. Uh, we weren't a member of, uh, the National League of Cities, uh, a few years ago. Uh, but a few years ago, council decided that to become it. I think it's probably one of the best things, uh, that happened because you not only bring information back to us uh, about what your colleagues are doing, but the end-all be-all of knowledge about what's innovative, I'm, I apologize for saying this, is not just in Pennsylvania, it's, it's all around the world, it's all over the country. And so the kind of things that you're bringing back, back to us are helpful to us in being able to do things, excuse me, things like talk about and deal with, uh, sustainability as an issue. And if you hadn't gone, we wouldn't have had that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, with the technical assistance to, to get us where we are. So the other thing I wanted to add about this is, is, is an understanding and fund balance so that everybody, you all know this, especially for anybody who's watching, um, that blue again is not, uh, surplus in the sense of money you don't need. That blue is what it takes to keep the government flowing. Uh, we don't get in January thirty-two million dollars or thirty-four million dollars to operate to December. You know, we get money as it comes in and, and we're paying bills. If you don't have that type of fund balance, uh, in Norristown and any other, any other place, you start doing things like borrowing, doing tax anticipation notes, where you actually borrow against, uh, what you anticipate you're going to get in taxes. You have to borrow that at the beginning of your, of, of your fiscal year and you have to pay it back at the end of your fiscal year. I've been in governments where I've inherited that as being the case, there's no way to live as a government where you're constantly borrowing. Yeah, that's all it is. It's a paid-up loan, that's, that's all it is. So what this allows us to do is, is, uh, is, is, is having flexibility and the cash flow to operate. Tell you, one of the other things that we haven't been doing and, and Norman and I have talked about doing this as well. When you have, uh, a healthy fund balance, it allows you to be flexible with how you use that fund balance. And one of the things that we're talking about doing that Norristown hasn't historically done is, uh, you know, we got, asked council and you, you did, uh, a couple of years back, uh, adopt an investment policy. Uh, local governments do invest money, there are strict guidelines on how you do it, it has to be safe. But when you're investing money, uh, and, and have money in a liquid and, uh, fluid investment policies, uh, fluid investment programs, that allows you to generate additional revenue that you didn't have. That's one of those places you can get revenue. So if you've got a million dollars or two million dollars sending somewhere, well, you can move it, uh, as you need to get it. At the end of the day, if you generated twenty, thirty thousand dollars off of the, off of whatever that investment money you got, that's an offset you can bring and say, okay, we need to fund this program. Or, okay, we need to feed that into a real rainy day program that's not even fund, uh, fund balance. So you have to use, uh, those kind of tools as well. And then the final thing I'll say about, uh, fund balance, and I, and I want to say this about taxes as well, is you all know from the fact that we, uh, went through the ten million dollar CIP borrowing that you did, the fund balance is a, is a major part of how you get the credit rating you get. Uh, because credit rating, uh, agencies want to know, one, that your government operates on a steady fashion, that you don't rely on payday loan, uh, to, to do your business. And two, while a lot of folks, uh, and, and talk about no new taxes, don't raise taxes, don't raise taxes, how you evaluated by credit rating, rating agencies has everything to do with, uh, does the elected body make... the elected body make sound fiscal decisions? And part of sound fiscal decisions is if you need to raise taxes, because that's how you're going to make your revenues, your revenue work, your budget balance, raise taxes. Because if they evaluate you and see that you don't do that, it's going to lower your credit rating. So the cost of your borrowing, if you're able to borrow, is going to be more, you're going to have higher interest rates on your borrowing than not being fiscally responsible. That's a strong thing. Do you have the rules in place like investment plan, which you do, like a fund balance, adopt a fund balance policy like you do? And are you making a decision that is sound, fiscally sound? And that, that all goes into the equation of how you borrow. And at the end of the day, if you borrow at a higher interest rate, it costs your taxpayers more to repay those debt.
I know this is old business, but can you just touch on briefly the refinancing of our debt and how we were able to get more money by not increasing our loan?
Right. Sure. So when we, we did the $10 million CIP program, we've done a lot of things to get ourselves ready for that. We cleaned up the six bad audits. Council had adopted a series of policies, like I mentioned, the fund balance policy, investment policy. Council had made decisions related to looking at what your annual fiscal situation is and making sound fiscal decisions. So that when we went back into, went into the financial markets, which had been the first time in over a decade, we went back into the financial markets to do this borrowing. The credit agencies, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, they looked at that and they saw that as a solid operation. We've been paying out all our bills, we weren't behind in the bills, we had a healthy fund balance at the time. I think at the time we did that, and you look at that now, we were close to $11 million fund balance and now we're down to 7.8. So that's what's spinning against your fund balances. And so they looked at all of that and what the result of that was, is that we got a premium credit rating on that debt. It was less than 2% credit rating on that debt. And because it was such, we were in such good shape, we got a double A minus rating out of that. We also got, got what you call a premium where we actually got cash back from the refinancing of our debt. And you use that, that cash back to pay down both our police and fire pensions in prorated fashion because of our unrealized costs, unrealized balances on our two pension, major pension program. So it was, that was a good deal, but that's all related to fund balance and fiscal policy and decisions that the body makes. So that's why that was possible. And that's why it's still possible, if, you know, because you make the kind of decisions you make and we do the kind of business we do as an organization.
How do we make our fund balance go back up?
Well, you've got, again, what we've been going through in this exercise within, in our, in our end is to look at, you know, we, you know, even before they got here, you've been through several, some of you've been through several budget cycles with us. We, I mean, we got lean a long time ago in terms of operations. So our operation costs have been 1%, 2%, 2% in terms of operating. Overall, budget's been no more than 3.5% increase. But the other thing you do is, you got to look at, how do you manage your costs? How do you, how do you identify revenue sources to plug back into the organization? And, and that's it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the magic. It's not, and how do you not, you know, we're not trying to grow it. You've got a target area, you're not trying to grow up beyond that 17 to 25 range. So it's not about gouging. Again, your goal is to get enough that from a fiscally sound perspective, you've got three or four months of operating cash. And I will say again, for me, having that as your active fund balance is really not the goal. The goal is get your active fund balance there, but you should be able to create a rainy day fund that has nothing to do with your active fund balance. So that ultimately, what you want to do is be able to have some funds that you've accumulated so if you want to do a capital project, you've got to source some money there that like, we can take some of that to do this capital buying. So you're not, you're not borrowing. But it's about fiscal soundness in terms of expenditures and looking for and identifying revenue, capturing that revenue that is out there that you're not, you're probably doing as good a job as you should in capturing it. And that's what this mission is and this initiative we've gone through the last year with the National Resource Network is to look at all of those other ways we can get, we can get to that, build that, build the fund balance up, back up. Okay. So let's get to the nitty gritty of why we're here talking tonight. So we know right now that our millage rate is 14.7, excuse me, mills. We know that in order to meet this budget gap, we can just make it all from reserves and bring our fund balance down even more. It doesn't have an immediate impact on taxpayers, but in the long run, it will. And I think we've had that proof of not, not doing a gradual tax increase and then you come to where we came to a year ago where we had to do a two-mill increase just to meet the cost that we have. The second option that we put forth for you in terms of making that, addressing that gap, is a half-mill increase, which would generate $423,000 and then get the rest from the reserves, which would leave us about $6.8 million in reserve. If we did that millage increase, which is a 3.4% increase in millage, the impact on the average, on average homeowner at $88,000 or so would be $44.42 for a year, a little under $4 a month. And then the third one is try to take as much as you can in the, in the millage, as much as palatable, we said a one-mill increase as an option, which would generate that $846,000. And then you would take the remainder from your reserves, your fund balance, which would leave the fund balance at 7.2 million. That impact would be about $89 on the typical homeowner, based on the average assessed value of a home in Norristown right now. So, so those, and certainly, you know, those are the options we put forward based on the fact in our discussions thus far, we all knew that it was going to be some combination of millage and/or fund balance that was going to have to address this continuing deficit. So I wanted to address again that whole question of comparing our millage rate to other folks. So you look at East Norton, how many folks East Norton have in, I don't know how many folks East Norton has off the top of my head, but when you start talking about number taxpayers and the value that one mill brings, and again, that millage is based on the assessed values of properties in that town. Well, you know that ours is one of the lowest assessed property values in the area. When you say one mill of Norristown last year was $879,000. One mill of East Norton was $946,000, West Norton, $924,000. And, you know, folks who talk about the county, I was like, I don't even know why you even know that. Their three mills would cost $59 million, almost $59.5 million is one of their mills. So it's, it's apples and oranges when you start trying to compare us to what the tax rate is in any other community. It's based on different millage rate, I mean, property valuations and certainly the number of property owners and the number of services provided, the level of services provided there. We've got the largest paid firefighting operation in Montgomery County. We've got the largest police force in the, in the region. So, I mean, it's, we're going to have greater expense. And then the other thing is, and we all have to recognize, we're an urban city. We're not a suburb, we're not a rural government, we're an urban city. So our service, our delivery is much more intense. We see the short, five, $4,000 decrease in what an average mill brings. So I wanted to make sure we got that millage comparison on the table. You can't compare one city's millage rate with another to try to say. You can compare what the value of a mill is and that's the assessed property values in a community, one community compare to a value. Okay. So those are the projections that we have at this point. We are at this point now where, again, we're asking council to consider one of those options for us to advertise the budget to meet that December 18 schedule. If council chooses not to act tonight, we just have to readjust that schedule so that we can get to an adoption before December 31st. And we'll have two more meetings at least as we go through this process instead of one. Again, if council chooses to advertise this, once this is advertised, whichever option you choose, the budget cannot be raised at adoption, the proposed budget, but you can lower the budget to a lower level if you choose to do so. So with that, I think we need some input, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do need input from council, any comments you have beyond those that were raised. And then we'll go to citizens' comments. I don't see any here, but we do have some, I'll read to council to the record.
So we haven't, we haven't discussed much of, one of our major expenses is litigation law and legal fees. We haven't discussed that. Is, is that an area that, you know, it seems like we have a high level of liability and a lot of money that goes into legal fees? Is that something we can get some elaboration on?
Sure.
Is that something we plan to try to address in the future?
Right. Sure. And I can tell you, we actually addressed legal, both a la contractual, pretty much last year. One of the things we did was to go particularly with the solicitor's office, with our engineer, and even with our labor attorney, to having a retainer base so that we know exactly what the cost is, at least on some level. It's, it's, it's much more contained for our solicitor because our solicitor, you know, he doesn't handle as many cases as, you know, some of the others. He actually handles general litigation on matters for the municipalities. So we, you know, we did last year an assessment of the previous few years in terms of looking what that was. And we came to, okay, on average, this is what our legal fees are. And so we proposed a retainer based on the last three years and that's what we're operating in. If there are things like legal, legal cases we have to do, or special projects we have to do, for instance, should council decide they're going to do a stormwater utility or something like that, that's outside of the norm in terms of the law and stuff that would be involved in that. So that'll be at the other rate that's in, that's in his fee schedule. Same thing with our municipal engineer. We knew that a lot of our, I'm not going to say a lot, but some of our costs had to do with things like meetings with staff and reviewing stuff. You know, we have bi-weekly meetings with the engineer, I have bi-weekly meetings. All of that's covered in terms of a flat retainer each month. And then a lot of, both from the solicitor's standpoint and from the engineer's standpoint, things like whether it's land development and other kind of projects like that, you know, those are covered in the fees that those folks pay, the developers pay or whatever, for, for legal services. So they're paying for that, we're not paying for that. Yes?
Professional services that we have, do they send you a fee schedule every year and are increases or decreases in that be scheduled built into those charges?
Yes. And they send, we actually pass that on to you. This is the time where we're expecting them to get to them, you're going to get them, you're going to get them shortly. And when they get them to me, I mean, I'm going to tell you, the frontline of my job is to kind of play bad cop. You don't want to, you don't want to increase.
So you're understanding that we're getting them in early to mid-December when the decision's got to be made in a few weeks.
Did you ever get that though?
Yeah.
Is there a way to get that information earlier in the process?
Absolutely. And if, and if, you know, we'll be happy going forward, I get it, I get them in October. And you can make a decision in October in terms of what you're going to do in terms of those fees. But again, what we say is, we negotiate with, with them. And I, and I will tell you, there haven't been any significant fee increases and that's why we know from a standpoint, and I'm talking with this $5 per hour here, or something like that. The most, the, 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 the most legal fees we pay have to do with personnel issues. And a lot of that is not, you know, you're negotiating with, we got, you got five unions and, you know, tons of personnel.
Can I answer your question then, based on what you just said? If you have one of those contractors and they say, okay, Karen, unfortunately, we have to increase substantially this year because of whatever reason, and they decide that they want to go away, what is likely heard that because it's someone at that same fee that's already embedded in our budget?
I think it's very likely. I mean, I mean, the thing, the thing about it, number one, I don't think any, any professional attorney or engineer or anybody would leave you in the lurch and do that. I mean, they'd negotiate an exit strategy for how they would happen. So I don't, I don't have any fear. But I think based on where you are most, you know, I, and I'll be flat out honest, particularly in terms of where we are compared to where other folks are with engineering, I think with, and with legal too, and with legal services, I think we're pretty good. I think, I think the issue becomes overall when it looks at what our legal expenses are. A lot of them have to do, as I say, with personnel issues that we don't create, but we're responsible for responding to. And, and also some outside litigation issues that we are responsible for responding to that have nothing to do with the organization itself. Now, some of that is captured in, a lot of that is captured in our insurance, in our liability insurance costs that we have. But on the, on the outside issues, but in the, in the, you know, it's almost night and day between personnel issues and other legal issues that we have. And I think from a personnel standpoint, that becomes the real difficult area because everybody needs, every government needs a good personnel firm. And I mean, you certainly can look at, look at a lot of different personnel firms, but that seems to be the toughest area to negotiate with in terms of legal.
I think one of our other things with getting that information earlier, it was not only cost but performance. So is, are we able to get a performance evaluation along with their cost analysis or whatever their features? Because, you know, like Hakeem said, three weeks prior to we deciding, are we going to continue with this engineering firm or this law firm or whomever? I mean, it's pretty hard to base a decision just on a list of names and not necessarily, we see Panone and all these, you know, folks coming through with certain developments and things like that, but just on a day-to-day basis, you know what the interaction is.
Right. Absolutely.
It would be very helpful if we had that. So not only the cost analysis, but the performance analysis so that we can, because I know Council President Sanders had put it out to RFP that, you know, essentially was putting our contractors on notice that we're looking, we're shopping, we want to keep you, your feet to the fire, that you're still giving us your best performance or whatever, you know, the monies that we're paying you.
Right.
We don't want that to be forgotten.
Right. Absolutely. And I, absolutely, and we'll make sure that going forward, we'll have an official review period and we target that for October then. we'll have an official review period, and we target that for October to, to have those discussions. I also uh, do wanna say uh, this in terms of um, you know, the fact that you did the RFQs and you reviewed folks. It's amazing to me that that doesn't happen as often in the Commonwealth. And my experience is, you know, every three to five years you do that. You all have done that in the three to five year period. Now, what I'm seeing, and I talk to my, my colleagues all over, all over the place, uh, this body is actually much more objective in how I've seen it in a lot, than in a lot of places. In a lot of places, Patrick can attest to this as well, it's uh, if it's D or R, out with the old, in with the new, the minute it happens regardless of any of that discussion. Uh, the fact that you have RFPs done, I, I mean, I've seen it where they don't do it. I don't think you, I think it's not good practice to do an RFQ every year. I think because it's, it, it, it just, it does, it's counterproductive. But I think every three to five years, you do that, you well in that window uh, for having done it. And I think next year will be a good time to, to, to look at it again. But I can't tell you the number of nightmare conversations I have uh, with some of my colleagues about friends getting appointed who have no skillset in their areas that they got appointed, but it was, he's a Democratic contributor. So you all do that, and to, to staff's appreciate, appreciation.
Well, I say who owes to Madam Fares?
Yeah, yeah, y'all do that, uh, and we, we appreciate that because it makes our job.
I'm not easy.
Cardi B, a crunk.
Yeah, so uh, but so that's, that's where we are. And I'll have uh, we, we will get, we will get those letters in. Um, and I, I, I suspect before this week is I will, will share that information with you. But I don't, you know, it hasn't been anything ever when, what? Kind of a, a feeling when you look at, oh, okay, it's, it's there and that. I know there have been times when, you know, some of them are savvy enough to know, uh, nah, I'm not coming. And most of them, well, Crandall, two dollars more an hour. It's, it's been that kind of discussion, it's not been anything, uh, right? And again, at the end of the day, I've always passed that on to you all because I don't select those folks, you all do. And so my thing is, like, you don't wanna go in there with that. That's all my job, my, my job has been this far, so.
Well, good point.
Yep.
My, my thing is, if you have any other questions, let's, let's, let's get them out now before we get out of this meeting so we can get everything out on the table. No questions, unasked, doesn't matter what's being asked, so we can get on with our business and work on other things that we need to work on.
Good, I asked a lot of questions.
Rebecca, are you looking back there?
Yes.
And you got all your questions?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, I think uh, knowing the process, we'll, uh, everything, our conscientious, I think that'll improve the process going forward. Um, and I think that'll lead to discuss.
Anyone else?
Does anyone need to talk about any live items that need to, that they questioning in regards to spending, anything? So we can get this done.
We had a question about debt services, Crandall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know we were on, we were on the hook for something that happened many years ago, Logan Square. That's part of that whole fund balance.
Well, now, now, the, the Logan Square piece.
So as that, that goes down, what does that do for us as a municipality? Where does that free up money for?
Right, well, let me clarify, the Logan Square piece is actually, we're repaying, we're repaying everything associated with that 504 through CDBG. So the block grant program has been adjusted now to cover that annual expense for the next twenty years on, 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 on that uh, project. Uh, our debt service and for, and as far as the refinancing of the bonds, actually that's scheduled, as you can see uh, back on one of the slides. The debt service itself is going to go down uh, because we're scheduled, I think it's by twenty twenty-two. Uh, yes, by twenty twenty-two, that debt service uh, it should be uh, down to one point four million. Twenty twenty-three is down to less than a million. And, and so that's, 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 that's gonna go down. What that means is uh, that you don't have, you'll have declining four million in that budget. So as this thing goes down uh, beginning in twenty twenty-two, you'll have the difference between three point nine, so two point five million dollars of extra revenue that you don't have to expend uh, in, in terms of what you're collecting now uh, related to tax and other costs that go against that. So that gives you a lot more flexibility. At the same time, you're also dealing with the fact that the cost of operating is gonna continually, continually go up. I think again, uh, given the things that we, we know we wanna do uh, operationally and what you wanna do from a capital stand, project standpoint, you're probably gonna refi, need to refinance that debt again. But even in looking at refinancing that debt, uh, if we stay on this track of having uh, great credit rating and paying our bills on time and stuff, you're still able uh, to reduce the cost of what that debt would be and you, and you, and still have it out on time. I think to think that we won't have to borrow again is not really, every government borrows, that's how governments live. And so uh, you know, the good news for us is, the borrowing you did actually was on kind of bricks and mortar and capital equipment stuff, and now they're paying off a pension program that went bust. Even the ten million dollars that got borrowed against it went away as soon as it got, it got paid, so. Uh, so, but you are, and I, and I think again, when we look at when um, NRM comes and talks about this long run, long range plan we worked out together, you'll look at uh, realistically, how can we sustain that fund balance? Build, build that fund balance back up and be able to kind of do the kind of things that you need to do, including borrowing and operating them.
So to go off of Hakeem's uh, question, can you give a, a rundown of all the steps that we took in regards to um, how we wanted to uh, pay them? Uh, so I know we had meetings with, with people to try to get that paid down so we didn't have to use our general fund?
Uh, in, in, yeah, I mean, in terms of the, of the capital project, you mean?
No, the, the five million dollars that we all.
Oh, no, 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 so, yeah, we, we, that, and that was, that was community development block grant. Uh, as you all recall, that project, uh, I forget what year was it, four twenty thirteen, so I can't remember the year. Uh, but that, that project, the Logan Square project uh, was based on giving a developer uh, a loan, five million of which was from the municipality, uh, ten million of which was from the county uh, to develop the movie theater project over at Logan Square. The, the developer ultimately went bust and because we guaranteed that uh, the loan with our CDBG money, the county guaranteed the loan uh, with their money, uh, we, and the project was bust, it became on us as the two respective bodies to pay it back. And so we did uh, in uh, we had uh, Representative Brendan Boyle uh, took a delegation of us, we, a delegation of council members, uh, we all went down uh, to talk, um, to hug about really forgiveness. And just like, look, we're pro-community and five million dollars means that we gotta pay this back out of our CDBG programs. We're gonna have to cut programs uh, to do it. Uh, there was some back and forth, Brendan, I think Boyle did a good job of stressing how important it is to do it. Uh, I had a couple of side conversations after that, thinking we were gonna be able to move it forward. Administration's changed and forgiveness is, is what we got. There's no interest uh, in this administration in responding to it. So we programmed ourselves uh, and have adjusted our CDBG uh, programs accordingly to begin the payback of that. Uh, I think certainly should that be another change in the waters, we will go back and try to have a discussion about getting some relief uh, about it. But we didn't, you know, we did everything that we could, uh, but uh, you know, we gotta pay the debt.
So uh, there's a buzz about us, you know, using council budget and discretion, you know, council budget for meals for every council meeting, you know, that we have, we, we purchase meals. We talked about having shortages in other areas, and if you guys can consider, I mean, I'm sure it adds up over the course of the year. I don't know the exact dollar amount that it costs, but I would be willing to transition that money to Parks and Recreation. We get a stipend for doing this job, we get discretionary funds for doing this job. I'm willing to pass that up and redirect that funding to go somewhere else.
Well, on top of that, I don't know about all of you, but most of my discretionary money left. So I wonder if maybe we could also talk about cutting our discretionary funds a little bit? I don't know, um, combined with meals, how much that would save, you know, sometimes a little bit goes the longer way.
I can, I can tell you in terms of, we're talking about in terms of council meals, about eighteen hundred dollars over the, over the course of, of a year, of, of the year. I mean, we're, I think we, the target is usually somewhere between eighty-five and ninety dollars per meeting. Now, also inside of that is uh, you know, when there's, when there are events, you feed the community too to induce them, which is common practice, uh, to do this. I will say that um, in terms of meals, and that's, it's always a council decision where you would have wanted to do that. But it's not uncommon that that happens in, in places, that's a council decision. And, and I've been in places where it didn't happen, I've been in places uh, where it did happen. So that, that's, that's the uh.
The perception is we're a community that's struggling for revenue. You know, we're trying to, trying to improve our, our financial fiscal situation. There's a lot of things we're trying to improve when it comes to finances. So if I'm, you know, if it means eighteen hundred dollars, the two thousand dollars can go somewhere else, and I gotta get my own meal, I'm willing to um, take that sacrifice. Cause it is a concern, it's a valid concern to some folks that we sit on this board, and there's things that we don't a hundred percent need, you know?
And there are also times that we use our own vehicles and our own gas to attend events that we, that's municipality business. So to get a ten dollar meal, coming from work and not having dinner, should not be a problem for anyone. Oftentimes, we go to these events, I don't ask for gas.
I can say.
Wait, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Gas is one thing, my time is another. You know, I'm not asking for that back. So if I'm coming from work, cause I work, um, and I'm not tired and fixed, and I'm here till eight thirty?
Just a recommendation.
One ninety thirty.
And this is multiple.
I was too, but I, I would volunteer, I was thinking to, to help a council attending.
Get more basketballs or more of this.
But you can use your discretionary money to purchase basketballs for Parks and Rec. Like, there's an option, and Hakeem, and you're speaking for yourself, you have no idea.
I am, and that's why.
Right, so I'm gonna speak.
It's the comment section.
Right, and so my situation, I prefer to use my discretionary money, just like Crandall said, to hire a local um, caterer to host the town hall and to give money to the nonprofits that are here that are helping those people. That's what I use my discretionary money, majority of it, outside of the travel to the National League of Cities or PML. Now, on the other hand, I work a full-time job, I have children, I don't have the time to come home and fix a meal and come back here every night that I'm here, outside of our first and third Tuesday. Now, if that's what you wanna do, then that'll help cut the budget. But I know that's not something that I can afford to do so that I'm able to be here.
And I'm not talking discretionary, I'm talking about strictly council meals, I'm, you know.
Yeah, if you wanna give up your twelve dollars a meal, so behave. I know that that's not, personally, that's not something I'm able to do considering the amount of time that we're spent here. And like Val said, there's plenty of things that I don't ask for my money back. There's no amount of money that they can pay us that we're getting now that uh, compensates us for the amount of time and effort away from our families, the brain power here at night till however long it takes us. Ain't nobody saying, we're gonna cut this meeting short because we've been here for eight hours already. We've all stayed here and sacrificed that time. So the money that they pay us, the stipend that we get, does not, I don't know about you, I know for me, does not cover the value that I'm giving to this community.
Also, just to keep in mind that we do receive a stipend where other councils are paid salaries, where they can afford to actually bring in their meals or send meals home to their families or be, or be able to have the option to eat on the way based off of their salary because they actually have a full-time salary as council, whereas we have what they say is a part-time job. But we all know that it's not part-time. We all know that it's not part-time, that we don't have set hours with them to do. There's times, I'm sending Crandall emails ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. I mean, so if we're talking about working and, and being compensated, I don't think that it really comes down to, to meals, to be quite honest.
Essentially, it's fifty cents an hour.
How much?
I don't think.
A dollar, please. I don't wanna be embarrassed, but.
It's like between a dollar and a fifty cents an hour is what we get.
And that doesn't include the extra meetings, workshops.
Right.
Um, that we have on weekends, that we give up our Friday nights and Saturdays to attend. Or the extra workshops before the big ones.
Advance sometimes, they'll be at that time.
See, what people don't understand outside of this organization, this group, they don't understand the time that we put in of our own, our own time, our own. They don't, they don't get that because we're not complaining.
Well, that's why it's called public service.
Exactly. It's fast waste.
Any other ideas and suggestions?
Oh, I did have a question, um, and maybe it's, oh, never mind, it's up there. Thank you.
Anything else? So our, our next order, uh, I'm sorry, we have public comments. Mr. Jennings, are you gonna read the public comment?
Yes, I'll, I'll be happy.
Do you have some water?
I need a refresher, so I gotta. So um, the first one is, dear council members, my name is Chris DiPaolo. I'm writing you to get dated a request that you do not raise your real estate or earned income taxes in Norristown in this year's budget. I've been looking at local tax scenario for some time and wanted to share with you what I learned. Basically, Norristown's overall tax burden on residents and businesses has created a similar situation to what Philadelphia faces, although on a smaller scale, it's substant, was substantively higher local taxes than its neighbors. Norristown and other taxing jurisdictions combined have created a financial incentive for individuals and businesses to move out of Norristown. Basically, Norristown is paying residents to move with tax savings to other lower-cost municipalities in our school district. Norristown is ranked high on all the long lists. Ranked first and highest of sixty-two Montgomery County municipality in real estate mileage tax rate. Ranked first highest of sixty-two, no, uh, Montgomery County municipalities in resident earned income tax rate. Ranked third highest of sixty-two Mon- Montgomery County municipalities in total mileage rate. Ranked fifth highest of twenty-three Montgomery County school districts in mileage tax rate. This has created a situation where if a resident moves out of Norristown and purchases a home with the same tax success value and retains the same job salary, in all but two out of sixty-two scenarios moving to other municipa, another municipality in Montgomery County, they will save money by paying less in taxes. Its tax savings simultaneously makes our residents more qualified for larger homes and mortgages, which gives them the opportunity to purchase a larger or more expensive home financed with the tax saving. a larger or more expensive home financed with the tax saving created by the move with no additional income. As a resident grows in their career and earns more money, this cost savings incentive grows. Simply put, we need to stop paying people to leave Norristown. We need to find ways to be more efficient and competitive financially to retain and attract businesses and residents. How much financial incentive are we talking about? Let's take a quick look at our immediate surrounding municipality. Uh, he attached a, a chart, which I'm not going to read, as you all have that in a lot of detail. In our example, if our median home income, home slash income resident were to move, in parentheses, purchase the same assessed value home, on, on the low end, they would save approximately one-hundred forty-two dollars per month, seventeen hundred annual, if they moved to West Norton. On the high end, they could save roughly three-hundred seventy dollars per month, or forty, forty-four-hundred fifty-one annually, if they were to move to Upper Marion. These savings are substantive and simultaneously create between twenty-seven and seventy-eight thousand dollars of additional home buying with no change in income. Impacts for higher-earning individuals with assessed properties are greater, are greater and corresponded for lower-earned or assessed properties impacts are lower, and again, referred to the spreadsheet the council was providing. Let's find ways to give our residents and businesses incentives to stay in Nor, Norristown. Fund balance challenges. I understand that there are dire predictions about Norristown's fund balance, but based on the posted information about the budget on page three, there appears to be an unaccounted-for cash surplus surplus of two-point-five million in 2022 and an additional five-hundred thousand in 2023 in the fund balance projection. If this graph, in this graphic, it is noted that Norristown debt service payments will be reduced by two-point-five million in 2022 and an additional five-hundred thousand in 2023 for a total of three million. Where did that money go? If you assume a zero expense increase for each of those years, your fund balance should increase to three-point-two million in, in 2022 and three-point-seven million in 2023. This free cash flow created by debt retirement is of great importance and managed properly could continue to increase in the, in the future. Where are these funds accounted for? I would like to very much encourage council to work to find ways not to raise taxes. I think Norristown is on the right track and improving. I know, I just know we can do better. We have to find a way to be more competitive to retain our residents and attract new businesses, residents and businesses. This is just a quick, quick snapshot of what I was able to learn from the limited information that was posted. I thank you for your time, service to the community, and your consideration. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me. I'm happy to help in any way I can. Best regards, Chris. On November twenty-ninth, uh, at the November twenty-ninth budget meeting, on November twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, we received the following. The municipality of Norristown released a budget proposal presentation for twenty, for the year 2019. The public is encouraged, oh, I'm sorry. This was based on what we put on the website, and here's a response about getting input. From what I can find on the county website, Norristown has the highest municipality millage in Montgomery County. This addition, in addition to the high school tax, makes the municipality an unattractive community in which to purchase a home. Why would anyone choose a community with high tax, tax rate, high crime, and mediocre schools at best? For the highest municipal, municipal millage in the county, Norristown has little to show. Norristown is plagued with higher-than-average crime rates, so-so services, dirty neighborhoods. High taxes will push out residents who can afford to move. Why can't Norristown attract new revenue? Attempts for development fall flat. Why? Norristown needs new revenue, not higher taxes. I strongly urge council to pass a budget without tax increases this year and instead pursue the other sources of revenue. Norristown has one of the highest tax rates in Montgomery County. This, in addition to the long list of things that make the community undesirable for people to move in, into, or to remain in. Additionally, the increased tax hurts the spending power of the residents. While at one time, tax hike might not seem significant, the repeated tax hike over the course of twenty-five years I've lived here have increased my mortgage a fixed rate by nearly two-hundred dollars a month. Another was, please consider other sources of revenue. We received this one on December sixth. Dear Norristown Municipality, please accept this as my formal submission of protest to any type of tax millage, increase of tax millage to the proposed budget of 2019. I find no hard solid factor evident that supports or wanted the increase of my taxes to compensate the outrageous, outrageous spending that created the hardship by our leader and representatives of Norristown. What I have seen is outrageous expenses rewarded through, throughout 2018 to council in the form of travel and trips outside of the state of Pennsylvania. Under the ruse there for continued learning and, and continued learning and teaching to council for them to help Norristown, Norristown grow. Recently, Councilwoman Scott's trip to Los Angeles months ago was, was with no feedback, given feedback or printed report to the public on what was beneficial to help Norristown, in Norristown grow. As far as contracts of obligation for raises, you did not provide enough detailed information to indicate justification on these increases. I also would like to remark that it is desheartening to know that you pay employees for substantial work. Recently, with the video taken and posted on YouTube for November twenty-ninth budget proposal to council, and the taping ran out due to ill equipment or poor planning to provide backup by your communication employee. Finally, I'm requesting that my letter be read on council floor before the proposed budget is passed and is submitted into the minutes of that meeting scheduled for December ten, twenty eighteen. Sincerely, Mary Ellen DeGrae. This is from Colin Doty Schrader. New taxes is the subject. McKemp Municipal Council of Norristown, hello. I'm writing to ask all council members of Norristown to please think of another way to get money from, for this town. I can't believe that you are actually concerning to raise our taxes again. I've been in this town for over seventy years, and the taxes are really hurting senior citizens. I've had a lot of medical costs, and this will not help at all. I understand that there's only certain percent of homeowners that still live or want to live in town. Unfortunately, that is not my problem, it is yours. Here's what I'm, I am seeing in this town. One, seniors are trying to stay in their homes, but your tax increase may have them leave Norristown. Homeowners cannot keep Norristown alive. Two, coming off the bridges from Upper Marion to sites so terrible, Decal and Markley Streets. Three, when traveling people ask, "Where are you from?", I tell them Valley Forge. Four, potholes on Markley Street for years. Five, Elwin Park has been the same since my kids were little, about fifty years ago. Six, start handicap ramps and never finish. Seven, all grants never come to the north end of town. Eight, why not have a rental tax, not the homeowner all the time? Nine, what happened to Logan Square? Ten, lost businesses, hot, lost business, hospital, large grocery stores, et cetera. Eleven, I could go on and on. I guess at my age, I would never see Norristown great again. Twelve, homeowners are doing, just do, are doing their job. Thirteen, when are you guys going to start? Fourteen, because all you do is raise taxes, and that is your easy way out. If you have not noticed, it's not working. Hope you're listening. I'm not the only senior that feels this way. And the final comment we received is from L. James Waters. Fire safety Buttonwood Street, clean up the riverfront upstream from the bridge to the island to Buttonwood Street. This would give the fire companies the ability to draw river water to, to fight fires on Buttonwood Street. This would, this will enhance recreational use of the area for river access. Dragon boats, triathlon, fishing, et cetera. Permits for utility poles need to include a, a deadline for completion of work, six months in parentheses. And that's the last reading.
Thank you, Mr. James. So at this time, are we discussing which options we're going to choose in regards to the motion to advertise for the ordinance of eighteen dash oh nine?
Question, will we come up with an answer?
Yeah, that, that was a question. Yes, there's three options in front of us. One is, uh, first is no millage increase. The second is zero-point-five millage increase, and the last is one-point-zero millage increase. So my understanding is that we can, if we approve the budget at the dollar amount, that we can increase it, but it doesn't necessarily say how we're arriving at that. So I guess the question is, do we have to decide which option today? Or are we just deciding on, I mean, we can still have that conversation, but are we?
We're just advert, we're voting on advertising.
We're just advertising.
If we advertise, if we advertise for, let's say, the one-point millage increase, at the time when we pass this, we can say, we can say no millage increase, or we can do something lower, but we can't go higher.
Right.
Okay, so we do have to do
So we're advertising a, a tax increase, not just a final budget, like, mine item.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to let, let folks know what the millage is, is proposed.
Pick a source.
Yes. You can go down, but you can't go up.
That's correct.
Oh, I'll start. You know, um, my, my choice would be either option two or three. Uh, number one for me is totally out.
Did you specify what the
Well, I'm kind of letting you know where my thinking is.
We're looking at it.
Three. I want to say three, because I, we can go down. If I say two, we cannot go up. So I'm, I'm going to say three.
What you're talking about, just so that we're clear, is that
I had the point for a whole point.
It's the one-point-zero millage increase.
No, zero. Option two is the point five, and option three is the one-point-millage increase. Using the reasoning that if we advertise this, we can always go down, but we can't go up.
Exactly. And, and calculating it, um, you know, it's seven dollars, when you roughly, seven dollars and some change a month, and, um, so that's my, that's my choice, option three.
I'm in support of option one, only, only because I feel that we are implementing some things within our departments and throughout the community that's going to be able to generate more revenue. I listened to the public comments. I identify what they're saying. I understand what they're saying. And, you know, I'm going with option one.
I'm going with, oh, go ahead, um.
Go ahead, okay. I'd say I, I'm going to lean towards option one to, mostly because comments, what I'm hearing, that people, it's not that they just don't want tax increases, but they can't afford a tax increase. So be it some dollars a month, we just sat around this table and said, we didn't want to buy dinner tonight some month, so I, I'm going to lean towards option one, the no, no tax increase.
I go for option two. Um, you know, I don't like people counting the money that I have in my pocket, so I'm not going to count the money that others have in their pocket for what they're able to, to do. Um, and I'm also optimistic that now that we have a highly competent finance director, that he will be able to streamline whatever budgets that may be outside of, um, you know, may have a little fat to trim, but also to, um, optimistic that we do have some revenue sources that are coming into town and some options. We have a lot of developments and things happening at the zoo and other areas that can generate revenue. Um, I had a second thought, but I forgot it. So, yeah, so I'm hoping to option two and, um, yeah, if I think of the second thought.
Well, I'm comfortable with option two, primarily because we can, we can advertise at this, and then we can lower it if we find alternative, um, revenue options by the time the actual vote comes up for the budget. My, so my option two is with a caveat to sharpen pencils.
Yes, and that was my other thought. It costs money to do business, like, these, a lot of these costs, you know, just like it costs more to buy a loaf of bread, so if you're on a fixed income, your, your grocery bill is higher just because that's the world. So, our bills are higher, and there's absolutely nothing that we can do about it, so if our revenue is not, you know, going up, we're not going to be able to, to stay or do business effectively, so that's part of why I went with two.
I'm also going with option two, with the option going back to one. Not really going to give any details, but at the end of the day, it, it affects us also, so. They like, we're just doing it because we, we get a pass on paying these, uh, these taxes, but just to stay abreast of where we're at, um, I know that our, uh, our department heads are going to, you know, do their jobs and, you know, do what they need to do.
So this is a little tough decision for me. I was definitely leaning more towards option one with no millage increase, with the simple fact that there is no immediate impact. And also with the fact that we could also still slim the fat and decrease the budget. Then I thought about option two, just because you are to go higher, and if we were to change it, it would go lower and have the staff have the availability to do whatever needs to take place. And again, for the audience, this does not mean that we have raised taxes because we're going around the table selecting our options. Again, it does not mean that we are raising taxes tonight.
No, we're simply advertising.
We're simply advertising the budget, so that everyone's clear. So with that being said, I am still going to go with, uh, option one. Madam Secretary, could you give us that count?
Consensus. You don't have a consensus on anything, so.
Okay.
We don't.
All right. So, at this time
Well, I'll tell you what, then. I will change mine to two.
Madam, madam
No, we still, no, we still have to make the motion. All we're doing is just advertising. I just want to be clear, for those that are watching, we are not raising the budget tonight. This is just a matter of a simple talk through.
I'm just going to offer, if it would be helpful, Madam President, would someone like to make a motion to advertise ordinance eighteen oh nine for the municipal budget for 2019 that would reflect a millage increase of zero-point-five as well as the, the proposed balanced budget, based off of that metric? Is there a second?
Second.
I apologize for interrupting, I'm just trying to be
Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Libby Brady?
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper?
Aye.
Hakeem James?
Nay.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Nay.
Derry Perry?
Aye.
Sonya Sanders?
Aye.
There are five ayes and two nays, so the ayes have it, and the motion to advertise the budget is approved and passed. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
They'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, the ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.